Jed, can I just ask you really quick, I have a document that Jim wants to put up. When it's time to show everybody.
Yep.
How do I, I saved it as a download, how do I bring it up as a document for you guys to see for the board? On the whiteboard.
You should have it minimized on your screen.
Okay.
And then if you click on the share screen, you should see all the documents that you have up. And you click on the one you want, and then I think it starts sharing and we should be able to get it.
Alright, thanks.
Well, I have seven o'clock, and so I will call the regular planning and zoning meeting to order. And first up on the agenda is roll call and seating of alternates. And I see Anne Fromay is here. I see Steve Nelson is here. Leanne, is that you with the phone number I don't recognize? Maybe not, okay.
Yes, I am here.
Oh, okay, so that's Leanne. And I did talk with Scott Person earlier today, I know he was expecting to make it tonight, but I don't see him yet, so at this point, I will seat Susan England for Scott Person until he shows up. And I am here. So that's our, that's our commission for tonight. Under item three additions and changes to the agenda, I would like to add one item to just briefly talk under new business item C, upcoming regulation changes. And does anybody else have anything that they need to add or change from the agenda? Hearing none, I will make a motion to add upcoming regulation changes as new business item C to the agenda. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Anne.
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Leanne? Didn't hear you, Leanne, and I can't see her.
She on mute?
It doesn't look like she's on mute.
Can you hear me now?
I can, yep.
Okay, yeah, I.
Okay, thank you, Susan?
I.
And I vote I as well, motion carries five zero zero. Any public comment before we start this evening, anybody who wants to address any issues that are not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll go to new business, and the first new business is five B receipt of application for special permit for an accessory apartment at forty-three Aspenall Drive. Jim, do you want to start us off on that?
Sure, this application came in. And we, I have not reviewed it, I only got the site plan and the architecturals, I believe, today. But it does seem to be complete and does require a public hearing, we're talking about a standalone accessory apartment at the end of Aspenall, in an existing garage. And I believe, well, I was under the impression either the owner or contractor would be on this evening.
I'm on it, and my thing says Lulu, I don't know why. My name is Robert DiAdamo, I am the homeowner at forty-three Aspenall Drive, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And my name is Nick Lulick, my company is Woodcraft Designs, I'm the contractor on that project.
Okay, thank you, Dick. So in my brain slifted already, I think you said Robert?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yep, I focus on Lulu and Robert goes right out.
Yeah, and my wife put that in as an old pet name, I believe.
Okay, yep, there you go. Do you want to tell us about your application? Would you like Nick to run through that?
Well, Nick, on the professional level is what you folks would like, I think it'd be better if he spoke.
Okay.
We know what we want, but he knows what we need.
Okay, very good.
No problem, this is a detached one car garage as it stands now, and we would like to turn it into a efficiency apartment with a full kitchen, a full bathroom, a bedroom and a common area. It will end up being two hundred and seventy-six square feet, we plan on hooking into the main house for hot and cold water, as well as use the existing septic design in the basement of the house, we'd like to break through that foundation wall and hook up into the basement to discharge, you know, the septic waste. It's going to be vinyl sided, we're going to put a new roof on it, we're going to add some windows to bring it up to code. It'll be complete with heat and
Nick, hold on just a minute, do you happen to have a the drawing of the building that you could share with us, or if not, I can have Jim bring it up?
Hold it up?
Nope, if you could I didn't know if you had an electronic copy that we could see there or not, and
I ended up emailing it to the, you know, the building department. I actually, it was last week along with the site plan, Jim was away at the time, but I did confirm that he did receive it.
Yep.
Nicholas, may I ask, could you just email it to me?
Sure.
And I'll just put it up?
He's posted.
Oh, it is posted? Okay, let me, let me.
I'm gonna see if
Okay.
Can everybody see my screen there?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
Yep, those are the four elevations, and it looks like a partial of the, some of it got cut off, but to the far left is just a continuation of the full bathroom in the bedroom. But it's fairly complete what you're looking at now. The building is, is twelve by twenty, we're going to add a six by six mudroom as an entrance, which would bring it to a total of two hundred and seventy-six square feet.
Okay, when you say twelve by twenty, I looked at it and I saw eleven by nineteen.
Let's see, okay, he's using the interior, one is the interior design, one is the exterior.
Right, the outside dimensions are twenty by twelve, what you're seeing is minus the thickness of the walls.
Yep, I got it, okay.
I did meet with Nick a few weeks back on a preliminary design, and it was modified to to address a couple of concerns, one of them being the minimum size requirement. As far as the septic, it has been referred to Northeast, or I'm sorry, Highland, Eastern Highlands Health District. I don't have a response as of yet, I don't know whether he's looking for additional information or not. Nick, were you able, did you provide him with a, some sort of a connection diagram?
I did not provide him with a connection diagram, but I talked to him in detail about my intentions and he was okay with it. At the time, this was like, this was probably three weeks ago, maybe more, and his name escapes me, but he yes, he did say that at this time, he was, he didn't need anything further. So I'm sure he's gonna want a copy of the site plan showing the connection at some point, but I have not heard from him since.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yep, I saw this drawing for the first time today, and there's the, what it looks like from the outside.
Correct.
Yeah, what the current garage looks like, I did not take a ride out there to take a look at it.
Yeah, the gable faces the road and it's got the large entry door to bring your car, obviously that will be taken out. There is a window that is cut off to the left that's existing, we'd like to keep that, and then the other windows would be egress windows.
Okay. And then I'm going to try and get into the A two survey. And so the questions that I had on here is, I did not see where the septic system was. And I know you've got to get Thad King's approval on that. But it would be nice to see that in there, and then the other thing I was looking for right off the top of my head was the adequacy of parking, you know, our regulations require three parking spots, two for the two for the main home, and then one for the accessory apartment. And I don't know if those fit there on the concrete slab or not, but if you could just show us that those will, will fit in there somehow, that you've taken care of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, there's, the concrete pad is existing and you can see it there on the print, but to the left of that is also additional parking, so we can, we can add those parking spaces so that, that you have a clear view.
Very good. So Nick, did you have anything else you wanted to add about the accessory apartment?
No, I think I've you know, explained it clearly, but if you, anyone has any questions, be happy to answer them.
I do have one comment, you know, we all hear about these tiny homes, and this is one right before you, and what was interesting to me is how difficult it is to lay one out. What we take for granted in a house, like sliding doors is almost prohibitive in a little tiny house. Challenge to, to meet all the requirements in that, in two hundred and sixty-six square feet.
Well, and I know that, you know, we're going to be trying to eliminate that minimum square footage, but I don't think you can eliminate too many square footage and get everything that you've got in that one, you got it tucked in there about as tight as it can be.
I agree.
I have a very minimalistic daughter.
Okay, yep, so I did see that Scott Person has now joined us, as has, as did Kevin Artisan, so Scott, at this point, we'll seat you in place of Susan England. As long as you're really there, Scott. Okay, very good, yep. So at seven fourteen, we'll seat Scott Person. The one more time, any, any other questions on the application that we've seen here?
Is, is it, what's this construction of the building, it doesn't show that a two by six, two by four, what, what kind of insulation? Is it going to be the same installation and required on a home?
We're gonna bring it right up to code, whatever it takes, so if we need to do, sometimes it's a two by four, but it's actually the old fashioned, you know, the two by fours now are inch and a half by three and a half inches, this is actually two inches by four inches. I believe the, the exterior R value that's needed is R twenty-five, so we're probably gonna use some spray insulation to bring it up to code. The ceiling insulation will be R forty-nine, there's plenty of room for that, and then we're going to insulate the floor as well, right now it's a slab, slab on grade frost wall foundation, so we're gonna, we've got enough headroom so we can put a floor down, so I'm gonna use pressure treated most likely two by eights or two by tens with a three quarter inch subfloor, and then we're gonna insulate that floor so that it meets today's building codes.
What size is that slab?
That is unknown to me, it's an existing building, I have no way of knowing.
Where's, is there a connection, a connection to the septic system?
Not as, as of yet, but we will be connecting, I did have a conversation with the sanitarian or the Highland District, the person that's in charge, and I explained to him, I'd like to break through the wall, go underground and then hook up into the existing home, and he said that was permitted. And that's how we'll get our hot and cold water as well.
Hot and cold waters coming from where?
From the existing home.
What about the electrical, are you gonna tap off the existing home for the electrical and put a sub panel in?
Yep, exactly, right now it's overhead, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle that, either we're gonna go overhead from the main house over, or we're gonna go underground with a sub panel.
Okay. But is it a hundred amp service today in the house, or two hundred?
It's, I believe it's a hundred amp.
Okay, and you have enough space to get a sub panel?
Yep. Okay, yep, should be good.
There's enough, there's enough available amperage in the, in that hundred amp panel to supply another accessory apartment?
According to my electrician, yes. But if we need to upgrade it, we'll, we'll do whatever it takes to bring it up to speed.
I wonder how many amps he's gonna bring out to that accessory apartment?
And we may not have gotten that far yet, but he has looked at it, we've talked about it, and he doesn't seem, seem to have a problem with it. So, you know, whatever it takes, we'll, we'll get there.
This is why he is answering these questions, not me.
Well, all that stuff has to be on the front, isn't it, Jed? All the hot and cold, where the septic is, if the septic meets the code, if it's gonna be able to beat a new accessory apartment, you know, is there enough trenches in there?
Yeah, I had that conversation with the person that's in charge of that, and he did say that I was good, I didn't need to upgrade the tank, I didn't need to upgrade the, the fields. But we do have an ASB built on the septic in the file, I'm kind of surprised it wasn't shown on the site plan, but I'll definitely add it.
Before you joined us, we were talking about adding that, showing the parking spots required, and I think that was, and getting the approval from Thad King for, for the septic hookup.
Is, is, how about a connection to the slab, how is that gonna be connected?
I don't understand your question.
You have to connect new building to the slab.
Right now, it's a, it's a, it's a frost wall, so it's a four foot wall with a slab, and the sill plates are bolted to that top of the frost wall.
That's already done?
That is done.
Plates?
Yep. So there's anchor, anchor bolts coming through the sill plate with washers and nuts and
Oh, the slab was built for this accessory apartment?
I don't know, I, it's, you know, as it stands now, there's a frost wall there, I'm assuming, I, I, you know, I have no way of verifying other than it's sticking out of the ground, it's set up like a frost wall with a slab, a port slab.
Come back next month anyways, isn't it, Jed?
What was that, Scott?
The, the application's gonna come back next month?
It is, and as soon as we're done asking the questions here, we'll talk about, you know, scheduling of a public hearing for this, and we'll go from there.
And the, um, the parking lot is large enough?
It is large enough, you know, from the original drawing, did not have, and I don't know if you were online, Scott, when we were showing the, the, you know, drawing of the essentially the garage, but they added a thirty-six foot mudroom, which with the two hundred and forty square foot garage did, did exceed the minimum requirement that we've got there. That was my concern, is we didn't have enough square footage, but the mudroom saved the day. Any other questions?
Will the mudroom be heated or not?
I would say it probably will not be heated.
Okay, and that still qualifies as square footage for the total, Jed?
I don't know that it is, Steve, because isn't the square footage of ceiling, ceiling height?
I, I did not
A finished ceiling, I think, finished ceiling height.
Yeah, there is, it falls under the gross definition of gross floor area.
Okay.
Again, I have not reviewed this for conformity, I just reviewed it the application to see if the components were here. Assuming that I would do it prior to public hearing. I believe that the six by six mudroom brings it into compliance, yes.
We went over that, Jed, finished ceiling height is, what, how we determine actual square footage?
Well, at least it is on the second floor of homes. I don't know, you, I guess I can go back and Yeah, it doesn't really show what the, what the wall height is there.
Yeah, so though, I can add that as well, finished ceiling height, but the finished ceiling height will be eight feet, right now, from the slab to the top plate, it's over nine feet.
Okay, and, and I do think it's probably worth I guess I was a little surprised by the comment, it was not gonna be heated, right? And we think that we would have, you know, some kind of heating in there for for whoever's living in there.
Jed, the question was relative to the mudroom.
Right, the, the building's gonna be heated.
I got you, okay. Yeah, yeah.
It's just the mudroom, we, we were thinking we'd probably keep that cold, build, you know, build it on piers. That type of thing.
Okay.
What is it gonna be heated with, Jed, you know?
I don't know.
What's that?
Probably does.
How's it gonna be heated, is that, was, okay, yeah, it's gonna be a ductless split, so it's gonna have AC and heat. So it's electric.
Yep, so I did, I did see where, yeah, I, I looked online to get the square footage. And that sort of thing, and I did see where the house has, you know, central air, so I guess, you know, if you could just verify, Nick, that the hundred amps is adequate for, you know, bringing, you know, the electronic cooling in addition to the house, it does sound like a hundred amps might be a little tight on that. Anyhow, that's, you're probably not one of the, the, you know, the things on our checklist, but, you know, we do expect this to be, you know, a little house, not a shed, and
The ductless split should also show on the elevation.
Yep.
Alright, no problem, yeah, it's a hyperheat unit, it's a Mitsubishi brand, it's good for twenty below as far as heating, and it comes with an additional AC program, so it's, it's, it's a nice, it's, it's perfect for this size building.
Okay, so those are just, yeah, those are some details there, we'd like to see the septic, electrical, heating unit, water to the accessory cooling unit.
Would, would you like to see a construction diagram where the heating's gonna be located, what is it gonna make it out of, I mean, how's the inspector gonna come in and inspect this?
It's gonna be open, you know, it's, it's like new construction, so bare walls, he'll see the rough, he'll see the, the rough electrical, he'll see the rough plumbing, just, just as if we were building it from scratch.
I've never seen a building built without a construction.
Well, the building's existing, so it's, it's already up, I mean, I can definitely add, if, if you'd like to see that, not a problem at all, I'm just, I didn't think it was necessary, because it's, it's built.
It's already up?
Well, garage exists.
The garage exists. It's an existing structure. Except for the mudroom.
So I don't, I, well, we'll, we'll hold as a separate conversation, but, you know, when I looked at this, review it, I, I went through what our regulations require, assuming that the building official's gonna get into all the, the other details for the building permit that goes on for this, and my intent was to verify it for our requirements.
Jed, I don't have the regs in front of me, but the, the minimum square footage, is that supposed to be? living space in terms of, you know, it's supposed to be heated and cooled or that's what I'm where I'm getting hung up.
So the the regulation says the gross floor area of the accessory unit shall be between two hundred and fifty and eight hundred square feet and should be less than thirty three percent of the gross floor area for the single family dwelling.
So to me, that means it should be living space, right?
Well, when you talk about gross floor area as opposed to net floor area, and again, this is one of the things that we were talking about changing here. When when I had the concern about you know, the nine by eleven, uh, I looked on the, you know, the G I S card for the the property in the town list, the the garage is two hundred and forty square feet. And so with the thirty six foot mudroom, that gives you up to two seventy six with the minimum being two fifty. Even, you know, even if we were to use just the internal walls nine by eleven, and that's, that gives you, you know, a foot uh, on each side, a half a foot thick wall.
You're eighteen by ten.
Would say again, Scott?
You're eighteen by ten then, right?
Um, no, no, the in internal walls are nineteen by eleven.
Living space?
Yep. But again, the our definition currently, we're looking to change that is gross floor area of the accessory unit shall be between two fifty and then eight hundred. So I, I consider that we've we've got that.
It's how wide is the that a mudroom?
Both six by six.
Yeah.
So again, that adds thirty six square feet.
Nineteen times eleven.
That was fair.
Nine plus thirty six.
That's two forty five.
Yeah.
Twenty by twelve. Again, we're going back to gross. If you go to the definition of gross floor area in the zoning regs, it's outside wall. And to the best of my knowledge, it does not address heat. It gets into basement height and ceiling heights of seven feet and this and that. And the other thing does not include heat as far as I recall.
Space, Jim. And it has to do with ceiling height.
What?
Has to do with ceiling height of conditioned space.
So if I go to the definition in section twenty four of floor area gross, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff here, but to address the issue of height of ceiling, it talks about attic space if the floor has been laid over which there's a structural headroom of seven and a half feet or more. And so I am confident that, you know, this is, this roof is going to come in at more than seven and a half. Nick can, you know, tell me if I'm wrong there, but
No, it'll
but it only talks about edicts, which, you know, again, uh, there's, there is it it doesn't say anything about the height of the ceiling on the main floor. I guess it just assumes that that's going to be higher than seven and a half feet.
Well, it's it's dictated by new construction, by building code as well.
But it does say, you know, that under gross floor area, you know, it's the external measurement of the walls.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, my wife and I, um, worked this up and and she took the inside dimensions, which is um, throwing us off a little bit, but the outside dimensions of this building is twenty by twelve.
Yep, so, um, so I think that was, uh, you know, I looked at this in the crisis in Connecticut with affordable housing. I was thinking that this was a good deal and to achieve that goal and yeah, there's some details on that, but I certainly looked through our regulations and and I think we've hit on those areas that we need to have addressed before we get to, uh, you know, our next meeting.
Yeah, I I don't disagree that it's it's not a good plan, but I just wanted to understand whether the regs required the space, the square footage to be living space in terms of conditioned space.
It does. It does not currently require that. It may in the future.
Mm hmm.
But, you know, under today's rules, it it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? And Scott, if you got more, we're happy to address them. Want to make sure we get a thorough review on on what we're talking about here.
Right. All the connections have to be on a print something.
Yeah, I will add those. No problem.
Something from the electrician saying that any modern house uses more than a hundred amp service nowadays, I think.
Yeah, revisit that with my electrician and we'll do, um, you know, whatever it takes to to be able to get this building up to speed. But I'll I'll make a note of that and I'll I'll show it on print.
Okay, um, Robert, an off the wall question for you. Are you planning on having a family member live in this?
My daughter.
Daughter. So the reason I ask
Yes, sir.
is you probably, you know, heard, uh, there's a lot going on about affordable housing these days.
Yes, sir.
And if you were to choose, and and I don't have any bargaining power to offer you anything in return.
Okay.
If you wanted to have that deed restricted in rent for ten years, that would give the town an affordable housing unit. If it's not deed restricted, doesn't count. So that's that's up to you. Uh, I've got nothing to enhance the pot for you one way or another.
No. We're just trying to, where my daughter, she or they lived in Plainfield, they sold their house, took advantage of the market. And she's always been wanting to be with us, my wife and I, and with the acreage we have here. Um, we researched with the town prior to even going into a conceptual thought idea, um, of doing this, which keeps family closer together.
Yep.
And, you know, like I said, i- it's good for every, it's good for everybody involved. Down the road when I'm, you know, moving on and what have you. Uh, I have my daughter here with a husband with my wife. So
Yep.
I'm kind of looking at it in different angles.
Okay, nope, understand and so that that's my plug for the and if you were to say you agreed to that, then it would take a little research project for us to figure out how to do that, because we don't know how to do deed restriction anyhow. But I'd be happy to go learn if that opportunity provided itself to us. Uh, with that in mind, uh, Nick and Robert, do you think you can have the extra details that we're looking for for, you know, our next, our next meeting comes up on April seventeenth, a month away from now? Does that give you enough time to get everything done?
Absolutely. No problem.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you don't mind me interjecting, and and that's where my next question was, because what we did was we refinanced our home to do this rental loan. And a rental loan has these time, you know, time to start restrictions, time to end, which they just put in, you know, as stipulation types. But like the girl at the bank said, we don't really hold it. What if there was a hurricane? We can't hold you. Um, I'm just going, I need to call them tomorrow. I'm going to correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just going to tell them it looks like everything's moving ahead. There's a few more things we have to supply to get in for the April approval meeting. Is that pretty much the way I should explain it to the mortgage company?
Well, we will, if you'll sit tight for a moment, we will make a motion to schedule a public hearing. And if that gets approved, then then that's exactly the track that we'll be on.
Thank you.
So, uh, at this point, I will make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the accessory unit, forty three Aspenall Drive for April seventeenth.
Second.
Don't move.
Okay. Steve, I got you as the second on that. Uh, any, any discussion? And, uh, Jim, can, you know, can we get all our notifications made to support that being a month away?
Absolutely. I will. I routinely provide a letter to the applicant and explain to them what they have to do, which is notify it butters, post a sign, et cetera. But I give you the particulars in a letter shortly after this meeting.
Very good.
As soon as the public hearing is set.
Any other discussion on holding a public hearing at our April seventeenth meeting? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for a vote. Ian?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Right, well, thank you.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. So, uh, we'll hold a public hearing at the April seventeenth meeting. And if we have, uh, everything we need, uh, at that meeting, uh, we would be able to act on that, uh, following the completion of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the commission at this point, either Nick or Robert?
No, I'm I'm good. Thank you for everybody's contributing to helping us get this done.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all we've got for you tonight then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next up is the new item five C that I added, upcoming regulation changes. Okay, uh, what is this that we're looking at? I didn't post it.
It seems to be the, oh. This looks like the gravel pit.
Okay, we're not at gravel pit yet. And, yeah. Carol Anne, I see you talking, but you're muted. Yeah, Carol Anne, you're still muted. Uh, if we can close this out, we're not at the gravel pit yet. Okay.
Sorry.
Yep, not a problem. Let me, uh,
Thank you.
Okay, so as as I was getting ready for this meeting, one of the the things that I was concerned about was the fact that the drawing that was posted in the folder did not meet the minimum square footage requirements. Uh, that's why the applicant added the the thirty six square feet for the mudroom. So I got myself working fast and furious on accessory apartment changes that we had talked about some time ago, uh, to do that. I think there's probably a couple other accessory apartment applications that are in the conceptual stage that we haven't seen yet. So I thought I would move ahead and try to get the accessory apartment changes through you guys and we would go there. Not a requirement for the application we just looked at, but certainly it it is part of our affordable housing plan to make accessory apartments more convenient, easy to get. And so I wanted to to push those next, although it's not quite the crisis that I thought it would be with the tonight's application. We also, I took I probably spelled definitions wrong there. But I took out of what we we approved for the uh, municipal land uses and took the definition of frontage out there because it wasn't consistent with what we put the application in. Uh, but I'll I'll add that at the same time, the frontage definition. And the two other things that we had come across that that I wanted to change fairly soon was you know, when we approved the kennel for Scott Beebe, uh, there was some discussion, there's inconsistency in the wording and and we used the out that we didn't need to hold a public hearing for a class A kennel. I do think that we would like to hold a public hearing for a class A kennel if it were in a place where the lots were more traditionally sized for the ARD. And so I want to change our requirements to make sure that we require a special permit and a public hearing for any kennel that we're put in. I think if somebody's living in a, uh, you know, acre and a half or a one acre lot and and they have a kennel right next to them, I know I wouldn't be too keen on that. So want to be able to make that be special permit kind of thing. The other thing that we came across was, uh, you know, we had somebody that was looking to build a new construction home in a floodplain. And, uh, I want to eliminate that as well. I don't think that the commission, you know, thought that that was a smart thing to do. And so those are changes that by next meeting, I will hope to have have ready for for you guys to review and then we'll we'll head out from there. So I just wanted to pass that by you at this point. Any any other changes that anybody thinks we need to make in, or any definitions? There were probably a couple other ones that we came across, but
Seems right off the bat, Jed, we have a problem with floor area. Because it's, it is conditioned space. Oh. I know it's conditioned space.
What do you mean by conditioned space, Scott?
Got to be heated and it doesn't have to be cooled, but it has to be heated.
Yep, right, and yeah, we'll take a look, you know, what we agreed to last time we we looked at the accessory apartment rules is putting the words in there from the state, I think. Anyhow, I'll look at that with with the fresh concerns that we came across tonight. That's why I thought tonight would be a good opportunity to, uh, you know, look at another very small accessory apartment and see how that might might change our our proposed changes to that. So I'll take a look at that and have something for you guys to look at next month when we get together.
That's good.
Okay, I'm going to stop now. And we'll let Carol Anne put that thing back up and Jim can talk about the old business first item is the gravel pit. And, yeah.
So I only got this drawing at this evening. I have not reviewed it. But it appears to show drainage. I will get, I anticipate getting a a full-size paper print tomorrow or the next day, which I will review. Um, I've also spoken to the applicant, the owner, uh, about completing the the hang and seating. And he anticipates doing that in April along with Planting vegetation along. The right side as you're standing from the road between Catherine Hutchinson's property on that hill for turtle habitat. Per the, per the original plan, and Hank had also asked that this. The portion of the silk fence be removed to allow for turtle migration. I'm just gonna verify that and reduce it to writing. And I'm hoping that. That work is done, well, basically getting to the end of April for the vegetation. Hope it should be done by then.
Was there any discussion, Jim, about bringing in additional topsoil for that back area?
I, I told him that was my concern and that we'd be monitoring whether that seed, whether that takes seed or not. It would be difficult to topsoil that slope.
Understand the slope, and we did have something growing on it last year before they excavated all that material out of there. But certainly the flat area where, you know, it extended back quite a bit beyond where he's got the hay and the seed now.
Right, so in front of the hill.
Seemed awful sandy.
Yes.
And I don't know if there. If there's topsoil on that hill in Glastonbury at the corner of eighty, eighty-three and ninety-four that they're taking out, but they're removing a heck of a mountain out of Glastonbury to make a comfortable housing development there. And it's incredible the amount of material they're moving, so probably get dirt cheap right now.
That's all gravel and. Rock and gravel that over there.
Okay, yeah, I, I figured it probably wasn't all topsoil. Okay, Jim, I think we'll, we'll give you a chance to review the drawing and. And give us a follow-up brief at the next meeting, does that sound good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Jim, or Jed?
Yes. Yes, Leanne.
Is it possible, it sounds like, I think you just said you spoke directly with the, with the owner.
I did.
Get this type of thing in somewhat earlier so that you and then we can see it a little sooner.
Sure.
Thank you.
I mean, I was, I can post this tomorrow.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Carol Anne, if you close that out then. Any other comments on the gravel pit before we go on to the next item? Okay, the next item is Plan of Conservation and Development Discussion Regarding Future Meeting Dates and Locations. So we have continued to. Work towards getting Taike, the company is. Involved in updating our Plan of Conservation and Development in addition to having. John from Taike be our town planner. There's, right this minute, there's money in the town budget to support. A town planner to a limited extent, certainly not a full-time thing, but, you know, we're looking at eight hours a week and. His primary job to start would be, you know, working on the plan of conservation and development. But as we were talking to the fellow, the, the problem that comes up is he's got, you know, a couple other towns that he's working for. And his Monday nights are already fairly busy. And so. I was thinking, you know, might it be possible for us to, to move the. Planning and zoning meetings to a Tuesday night, what, what kind of, you know, problems does that create for anybody? And we don't need an answer tonight, all, all I can tell you is that, that our choice of, you know, who we might want to have for a town planner. His Mondays are, are pretty much all full and would be looking for a different day there. I, if I had my pick, you know, I would, most convenient for me is the third. Tuesday of the month, I've got other meetings right now on the, the second and the fourth Tuesday, so. The third would be good.
Tuesdays would also be better for me, Jed.
Tuesday better for you, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, now I see Ann shaking her head.
That's fine.
Yep, Steve, how's that work for your schedule?
I think that'll work.
Okay, Leanne?
Yes, I think that would work for me also.
Okay, super, that, that was, that was easier than, than I hoped, I was hoping that we wouldn't finally get money in the budget, get a guy that we wanted to work with. And then we, you know, couldn't, couldn't arrange to have a, a meeting there, so I'll plan on. Plan on at some point, probably after July. Shift our meetings to Tuesday. But that's, and that would be the reason, so thank you very much for supporting on that. Kevin and Susan, did you have any thoughts on that, can those work for you?
I'm pretty flexible.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Kevin.
Tuesday's good for me.
Okay, that sounds like a win all the way around then, thank you. That's really all I had on the Plan of Conservation Development. Update, any questions on that topic or where are we standing on the town planner, but I'm, I'm encouraged that. We might actually be able to make some progress on, on getting a town planner working on that and. If it wasn't Plan of Conservation and Development, I'd like to have him working on actually getting us started on the Affordable Housing Project. Because that's a big deal. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go on to training requirements in. We're gonna go. Okay, so again, this is out of, you know, the Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine. And I just, you know, wanted to put out on here, we've talked about the training requirements a little bit. But anybody who's on the commission, you know, after January first of this year, shall complete at least four hours of training. And that'll be every other year thereafter. Training content must contain at least one hour on affordable and fair housing policies. May include process and procedure. Shows a bunch of stuff there. And the training guidelines must be established by OPM prior to one-one twenty-two, I don't think they met that date. And it says training may be provided by various entities and a bunch of things listed down there. The, the two of most interest there are the Connecticut or the Land Use Academy of Yukon, which is clear, and then the, the Connecticut Bar Association. So. Did anybody, anybody get anything from the Connecticut Bar Association following that training, little diploma or anything?
I didn't get anything either.
Yeah, I didn't get anything either, and last, last time I attended, they asked for feedback on it. Maybe that was because that was the first time they did it on Zoom. But one of the guys who, the guy who was talking on fair housing. Right after we had the half hour on affordable housing. Said, gee whiz, you guys have just sat through a half hour on affordable housing and a half hour on fair housing, that sounds like an hour to me. I know Mark Brants had said that, you know, we only had a half hour into presentation and. You had to do something else, but this guy said during the training that he thought it met the conditions, and I think it does too, so. If, if you attended the, the Connecticut Bar Association training, I, I assume that. You have met the training requirements, if you send me an email saying you attended, I'll put that in my little file and. And you are done with, with land use training for the next two years. Now, I know. Ann Creme was there, Jim, you attended?
Yes.
Okay, and you've got some special requirements in that public act that I did not put up here because they only apply to you. Are you in good shape with respect to all that stuff?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Scott, you attended?
Yes.
And Leanne, did you attend? Don't, can't, didn't hear anything from Leanne. Kevin, were you able to attend?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, and, and so the next. Say again?
Yeah, this is Leanne, yes, I attended the, the whole day.
Okay, yep, good, so we're off to a good start there, the, I know that. The Bar Association recorded the training session. And so I think there's really two ways that you can, you can. Accomplish the, the training thing, if you can, you can sit through. The, the stuff on the Connecticut Bar Association and at least up through the fair housing portion, I think there was. A couple of things on inland wetlands after that. They were good, if you wanted to get that, you can, I have not looked online to see where it's at. But I'll get something, you know, even if I have to email Mark Brants to get ahold of that, but I did not see anything talking about where to go watch it. The other thing is those three clear sessions that I sent the link out to everybody before, which, which did have, you know, they were three sessions, an hour and a half each. And, and that seemed to fit the requirements for everything and, and that could do it too, so I know you can link into those. Either way is good. But it makes sense to me since, you know, I didn't ask any questions during the thing, if you were to watch the video. I think that's certainly good to go, and I don't see another, a lot of other opportunities to meet the training requirement. With that, and, and so. Kevin, if you could try and, and meet one of those two wickets by the end of the year, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
And then. So if we go to the next slide. I must report compliance annually to the legislative body or the Board of Selection, Board of Selectmen in the town meeting towns, which is us. So, you know, as part of my annual report. Next year. Well, probably not for this, because we'll go to the end of the year here, but I would, I would ask that you do the sexual harassment training by the end of June. Everybody and let me know when you're done with that so that I can put in my annual report that we've done that and then. I will write, you know. A note to the Board of Selectmen at the end of the year saying where we stand on getting the land use training done. So that's all I wanted to say about that, but I know. Susan England told me that she, you know, watched the Connecticut Bar Association training and the, you know, the, the clear training, so she's, you know. And, and I did the same, so we went above and beyond the call of duty to meet the training requirements, but it sounds like. We're in pretty good shape on that, so that's good news too. Thank you. I know some of those lectures, oh, I didn't, I didn't ping on Steve, so.
Oh, I have not completed it.
Yeah, I, I know you've been busier than our paper hanger and so.
Yeah. I'll try, I'll get it in before the end of the year, though.
Very good, appreciate that, Steve, thank you. Anybody else I didn't harass on training here tonight that's. I think we got everybody, I'll, I'll catch up with Ann Blanchard at some point here and find out where she stands. Prove that next item up. Is approval of the minutes. And the first item is the public hearing from January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. And has advertised those minutes were hard to, to prepare. Hard to get through. Carol Anne, Jim and I sat and went through them a little bit and what I said. I think, again today, you should have already had that earlier, was, was a revised set of meeting minutes. And so. I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes from January twenty-third.
A second then.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion on the public hearing minutes? And I have none might have already been incorporated. Okay. Hearing none, a call for a vote, Ann?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Leanne? I'll come back to you, Leanne, in a moment, Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Leanne, if you're still there, I did not hear your vote. Okay, so I'm going to treat Leanne as an abstention at this point. And the motion carried. Four, zero, one with Leanne abstaining. For technical reasons, most likely, but. Do that as a bait. Next item up are the regular meeting minutes from January twenty-third. And I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January twenty-third, Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Ann?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Leanne? Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes four, zero, one with Leanne abstaining. Moving on to the special meeting held February sixteenth. I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from February sixteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second it.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ann?
Aye.
Steve?
Jed, I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Okay. Leanne? Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes three, zero, two. With Steve Nelson. With Steve Nelson and Leanne. Abstaining.
I'm back now. Yes, I I also was absent, so I would be abstaining anyway.
Okay. Did you want to cast? An aye vote either in support of or opposition to the January twenty third public hearing or. Regular meeting minutes. And I can leave you.
You can what?
I can leave you as we we put you down as abstaining because I didn't hear from you. But I can go back and revise that. If you wanted to devote. Aye or nay. Or we can leave you.
I had a question. I was looking for it while I was trying to unmute myself.
Okay.
On the regular meeting minutes.
Yep.
Under number six, old business. About two thirds of the way through. It's number six A. I guess it's the only thing under item six.
Yep.
It says Jim Hallissey, et cetera. The sentence that begins, it's well within, well outside the wetlands review area. All right, well. Outside approximately hundred ninety five feet currently. So it sounds like Carol Anne was, you know, taking it right from the tape. So I was just wondering for clarification where it says it's well within, well outside. Do you see what I mean?
I do see what you mean. And and. Certainly, the intent of the discussion. I might be speaking for Jim here, but he can correct me if I'm wrong. I remember him saying. That we were well outside of the upland review area.
Okay, so if we can just add that correction.
So. So the correction would be to remove the words well within, so it reads, it's well outside the wetland review area. All right, well outside approximately hundred ninety five feet currently.
Actually, I I think it's outside, it would have been outside the approved. Plan, not the upland review. But the upland review area.
What do you mean by well outside the approved plan?
The approved plan from wetlands was something like ninety five feet from. Yes. So it was the wetlands plan. Because. The one ninety five, one ninety six, as I recall, I mean, that's a two hundred foot. Upland review area in that area.
Along the river.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you saying that they have their own plan and it's outside? The approved. Plan belonging to wetlands, not us?
Well, it was the same plan. I I I realize. I mean, it's it was the same plan, but.
But the wetlands, the wetlands commission authorized the material removal.
Okay. So I guess I'm just a little confused about the difference between. Saying it's well outside the wetlands review area. And the wetlands. Plan, which you're saying is the same plan that we would have had. So you're saying it's it's kind of the same thing, thing as well outside the wetland review area.
I don't know what I said, but what I believe I meant was the approved plan. And that approved plan was a plan that was approved by both commissions.
Okay.
But the statement isn't inaccurate, isn't it? Don't understand what you just said, Scott.
Oh, that you're saying that there's a two hundred foot buffer for the along the river, which I know there is, and it's. The grading was okayed up to one ninety five, so that's within the two hundred. It's not out of the buffer, it's in the buffer.
I agree. I'm saying that the activity was further away than the approved plan and. And shown it approved.
All I know is when we were wrestling with. Removal of material from that hill. We sent it over to Wetlands Agent to review it. And he said is not a problem. So I figured, you know, it must be outside the wetlands review area and I don't have the. The photo in front of me right now.
We're not really in agreement right now, right?
Yeah, hold on just a minute. Let me see.
Jed, that okay would have to come from the Wetlands Board. Right?
Not if it was. We have given the Wetlands Agent authorization to adjudicate matters inside the upland review area.
Right, exactly. He can do that and you and you have given him that.
Yep.
But that's still only the zoning enforcement guy, isn't it?
Well, that's the. The Wetlands Enforcement.
All right, all right. So you gave him that permission?
We did. The commission authorized him to adjudicate. Applications inside the upland review area.
You okay to find it?
So I guess I'm still not clear if if this is considered inside or outside.
Yeah, I'm trying to get. I'm trying to find. A picture that we can put up and. And look at exactly what we're saying. So here, this line here. Is two hundred feet from the Hop River. And what we did is we excavated a bunch of stuff out of here. And we never went back. To that two hundred feet buffer zone. It was all in this area here. So that's, do you agree with that, Jim?
When was this print made?
This print that we're looking at here is from August. I'd have to. Close it. August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Last August.
Right, so they just finished that grading, you know, two weeks ago.
Yep, I got you. But all they did was they smoothed out the big. Excavation cavity that they had put in there. Right. Again, if you look at it, the two hundred foot line going back here. That is way back towards the end of the hill, up up, you know, up over the top. And so I, while they got close to the top, it wasn't at the upper elevation. And that, you know, shows me that it's all. Outside of the upland review area.
But did they fill that area in, Jed? Is that what you're saying?
They just, I think they just plowed the edges smooth.
Yeah.
You know, there was, there was. There was a big excavation right in here that was all done and they just, you know, leveled it.
Yeah. It's take. Out an area over the right. On the right side, not not to go beyond, and they they did not.
Wasn't anybody checked that that the two hundred is still there?
The Wetlands Agent took a look at it and said it was fine.
Oh, good. Measured it?
Don't know how he, don't know how he came to that conclusion. All I know is. You know, when we were discussing. The the way ahead with Mark Brants here. He, the Wetlands Agent concluded there was no Wetlands violation.
Where it says two hundred foot, two hundred feet to water course, it's that line?
Yep. So, right here it says two hundred feet to water course and that goes from the Hop River to this line right here. And then, you know, it it comes back down because of this. Ruck over this way.
Well, Jed, the only reason I'm asking you is. Because. I I don't know where the two hundred foot line is. That's, you know, is it there? I'm I'm not saying they did or didn't change that. Somebody needs to. Check it.
Yep. I did not. I did not check it, you know, looked, I did look at what they were doing. In comparison to, you know, the the picture here, and I thought what they did was reasonable.
Right. They knocked the edge down, building that hole.
They did, yep. That's exactly what they did.
Yeah.
And that's what I was expecting them to do.
Right.
So I guess going back to. The sentence that Leanne questioned. And I think the best we can do is is, you know. Stay with crossing out the words well within. It's well outside the Wetlands Review Area. And and Jim, maybe the best thing to do is put a period there. Hundred ninety five feet only clouds the issue up because hundred ninety five feet is on the wrong side of the line. And and I don't think that's where they were at.
Um, this is Leanne. I can't see. I'm not actually in the the actual Zoom portion. I mean, I can't see what you're, what you have found and posted, so. If Scott, you understand the clarification?
I I I do understand it, Leanne, but nobody's gone out there and checked it. If they knock that edge off, you don't know where that two hundred feet is. That's my point. Knock the edge off, you don't.
It was a stake in the ground. We went out. It was out. Both Joe and I verified it. Both Joe and I saw it.
I know, but did anybody, did anybody measure to the river?
I did not.
Again, if you look at where this line, you know, going up here on my cursor, and I know you can't see it, Leanne. This is way at the backside of the hill. And so when we were talking about, you know, moving the material. We were talking about keeping them over on the left hand side of this because that's where we got the most room. To negotiate, but even, even here, you know, it's. It's a.
They never. They they never touched it, Jed? That corner, that side?
The right hand side?
Yeah.
I don't think so. You know, I don't think it's where they leveled it off wasn't too far in front of this, but it certainly wasn't back behind it.
No, I don't know.
Well, can we, can we leave it that we'll make this. Change to the way the minutes are worded and then can we leave it that Jim or the Wetlands Agent will measure it between now and the next meeting?
Well, I think at this point, the minutes are approved. Might have an error in it. But but they are approved at this point. And that doesn't mean that Jim can't go verify. You know. How far the crest of the hill is from. From the river there. But I thought, you know. All things considered, I got, I got what I was expecting to get. Which. Which was more than I thought when we started started this out. I thought we're better shaped than I was given his credit to be able to get to. But Jim, I would ask you to go, you know, just check to see. How far the crest of what they've got there is from the river. But I know you and I know you and Joe went out there and and check that out, you know, when we were fussing about them. Having the excavation cut in that.
Yeah, we're going back, I mean. We're going back a little bit. And we played around with that, that concern about the. The angle of repose on that slope.
Yep.
And eventually, and and they didn't seem to get it. Right for a while. And eventually, we were happy with it.
But Jim, you were out there with both Hank and Joe. And you were both, you all three were satisfied with what was going on, with the exception of a couple of comments that Hank made that they're addressing.
Yes.
So.
Okay, well then, thank you.
So Leanne, we're gonna cross the words. Carol Anne, well within. We'll make that correction to the minutes. And Leanne, did you want to vote one way or the other on that? In abstaining. Okay. So.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to back.
So those minutes are approved, you know, five zero zero. And the same thing, Leanne, with the the public hearing minutes. Did you have any? Okay, so the public hearing minutes are approved five zero zero as well. Okay, thank you, Leanne.
Welcome.
I I can't remember. Where we got to, where we. We we're done with the special meeting. Now up to.
February twenty seven.
February twenty seventh. Regular meeting minutes. And I move that the regular meeting minutes from February twenty seventh, the Plains Zoning Commission be approved. Anne, don't stop now. Oh, thank you, Anne, okay. Did we have any? Anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I do. Sorry, I'm trying to find it.
Okay. Take your time. While we're waiting for Leanne, Jim, I asked you to take a look at the Enforcement Actions Update versus. What you had said, just to make sure that all those were what you had said.
Yes. The exception. There's a couple that are that are not filled in. Uh, let's see. Give me a second.
Okay, while you're waiting, I'll start with a couple of my own comments. If, does anybody else have any comments on there?
I just had two at the very beginning. This is Leanne.
Yep, go ahead, Leanne.
Um, one was, um, um, actually, they're both under the same item, under others present.
Yep.
Um, I believe my mother, Catherine Hutchinson, was present in the audience for the whole meeting.
I agree with you.
And then, if we could just add Hank's last name is Gruner.
Yep.
That, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. And on that same paragraph, I did not think that Eric Anderson attended the last meeting. And I went back trying to sort that out with the video today, and I couldn't tell one way or another. But the fact that he didn't comment makes me think he probably wasn't there. So if we can eliminate Eric, add, uh, Hank Brunner's last name and add Catherine Hutchinson. That would do that. The other, uh, the other thing we need to state, uh, Carol Anne, is that we had, uh, Kevin and Ann Blanchard both seated as commission members due to the absences.
Okay.
And then. I'm okay with the enforcement actions as written in the minutes.
Say again, Jim?
I'm okay with the enforcement actions.
Okay.
Reported in the minutes.
Under the, the first little paragraph under the zoning agent enforcement actions thing, says an application has been received for an accessory apartment on Aspenall Drive at the top of March twenty twenty-three.
That, that's what Jim said, so, uh, you know, he didn't, he didn't have any other information to provide at that time. That's what he only, that's all he offered to add.
Okay.
Okay. Now maybe. To see for next, uh, Aspenall Drive.
Period. So Aspenall Drive, period. Uh, we don't need the, the information on the date. Uh, it actually gets received as of the date of tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine. That reflects what, what transpired, yes.
Yep. And then the next.
What that reflects what I should have said, if that's not what I said.
Yep.
For purposes of these minutes, I think that would be fine.
And, uh, the following sentence there should be, it is expected that a public hearing will be slated for April twenty twenty-three. Jim doesn't get to schedule those.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're gonna let that one slide.
Any other comments on the minutes from February twenty-seventh? Okay, so we're voting on the minutes as amended. Anne?
Aye.
Steve?
I'll abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay. Leanne?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes four zero one with Steve Nelson abstaining. And again, it's not a requirement that you abstain if you weren't at the meeting, it's just a question of whether or not, uh, you, uh, you watched any of the meeting and that sort of thing, and, uh, that's, uh, your personal feelings on whether or not you can vote to approve them or not and have to abstain, so. That's it. Lost my agenda here. What's up next on the agenda, Jim? I know we're getting close to the end here.
Leave it zoning agent report.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And Carol Anne, I, I will send you a copy of this matrix. I know I said I would. Um, I will send it out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, property at forty-three Times Farm Road, owner Philip Byron, RV used for human habitation. Uh, I have recer- received, well, the gentleman that's living in the trailer stopped by, um, told me he'd be out of there early April. And I have left message, I have spoken to the, the gentleman who is the administrator of the estate or the conservator of the estate, and he, he has been tried, he tried to get ahold of me, and I'm, I'm under the impression that he will be following, following up with a written comment. I did, I did not actually hear him say that he would take care of it. Uh, he, he said he would speak to the gentleman living in it, and he apparently did. So hopefully that will be resolved soon. Eighty-seven Merrick Valley, I have a ongoing operating, um, landscaping business. I've sent a few letters, and I, I did get one response, and I provided, um, a follow-up, some directions to them, have not heard from them, but I will follow up on that. Sixty-four Long Hill Road, longstanding debris complaint. Um, I did hear from the owner, one of the owners, uh, and it, I was, I did get a scheduled, a written schedule for uh, cleanup. I did issue actually a cease and desist or, I'm sorry, a notice of, uh, a, a notice under the blight violation. And then I was told by the town attorney to follow up with a second notice, which actually put the appeal period in there, which I did, it is now accruing fines. Um, and hopefully that will be taken care of. Um, and hopefully the fines will drive the, the speed of that. But he gave me a cleanup period sometime in April, and I was hoping for some, something quicker than that. But I, I will be in contact with him again. Um, three forty-nine Route six, Thomas and Linda Mills. This is the Latlady Fence, I've been working with him for some time. Um, I, again, I have a, a written memo from him indicating he would, he's purchased the pro- purchased the material, he is painting the fence, and hopefully it will be up in April. Prepared. And last but not least, I have property at six sixty-four Route six, property Steve Barnett, got a lot going on there. Started out as a, as a with a lot of junk accumulating. I was trying to work with, with the owner. And I uh, his progress has not been too quick. A cease, uh, a blight violation was sent out. Clock is ticking, I intend to follow up with a zoning violation for, for the junk under, I'm calling it a junk business. And, and I have spoken to Mark Brants, and I have put together a memo that I'm, hopefully we'll get out tomorrow. Kim, on that. In addition, there is a, a an RV behind the house, there's a single-family dwelling on the property. And behind that single-family dwelling is, is an RV with people residing in it, and I had sent out a cease and desist. And I was led to believe that that had been vacated, and I think it was for a short period of time. Um, it, folks have moved back in. Again, I'm, I'm working with both the owner of the property, Steve Barnett, and Mark Brants, see what we can do, trying to find alternative housing for them as well. In addition, um, not exactly a zoning violation, but there's been a, a health order, health district order on the single-family dwelling, that it's no longer habitable, and trying to provide some assistance to the gentleman living in there. And it's, um, it's been very time-consuming, it's, it's a difficult process. It, the health code, the, the fact that the town gets involved in a code violation action that displaces somebody triggers, uh, real, connect the relocation act. Um, and we're working through that with, uh, a number of parties, including the town attorney and, uh, our social service person. But it's, it's rather a challenge. That's, that's what I have. Any questions, be happy to answer.
Okay, moving on to the inland Wetlands Water Course Commission liaison, I have nothing to report. Next up, item eleven, public comment. Don't think anybody's left to, uh, to public comment, so, uh, that's that. Next regular meeting, April seventeenth. I did check the, uh, the calendar and so, uh, we know we got the right date for the right day on that one. And, uh, we are planning to hold that meeting live, uh, in the community room. We're gonna give that a try. I'm not gonna try doing a hybrid meeting first, I just wanna get a regular meeting back in the community room, we'll see how that goes, and, uh, based on that, we'll, uh, we'll see if we can do a hybrid to, uh, get other people in. Any, uh, any questions or comments about the, uh, fact that we're gonna meet in person? And after we try it, we'll see whether we like that better than what we're doing now or not. Land accordingly. But it'd be nice for the summer months to, uh, actually get together in person there. Next up.
The idea of a, of a hybrid meeting in the future, if that can be, you know, facilitated after we have this in-person meeting.
Yep, I, uh, since all I have is a desktop computer that I feel comfortable using, I'm not sure what I'm gonna use, I have to, uh, get the, figure out how I'm going to, uh, you know, share screen, do all that stuff from Town Hall on a computer that's not mine, and that, uh, maybe that'll be very easy, I don't know, but I'm not gonna go for the, uh, hybrid and demonstrate my, uh, inability to do all that technical stuff, uh, to any wider audience than I have to. Next up is item thirteen, miscellaneous, anybody have any, anything at all that they'd, uh, like to talk about tonight? Okay, well, once again, I want to thank everybody, especially everybody that participated in the, you know, Connecticut Bar Association training, that was, uh, that was a long Saturday of viewing, I think, uh, I was disappointed when we didn't get our ten-minute break at, uh, ten minutes to twelve to go out and grab a sandwich before we started right into the next presentation on all that stuff, and, uh, that that tent, that taxes your attention span just a little bit, uh, having that much at one time, but, uh, a lot of good stuff there. Um, I thought it was well worth the time, there was just a lot of a good thing. And
Can I ask you a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, Kim, what what throws up the red flag for, um, pins, you know, corner pins on people's properties, when, when do those get put into the property? When do we require them? Is there any thing set that you know?
Yes. Subdivisions. Subdivisions, they're required and they're rev- they're placed on the, the as-built plans.
Right. Um, they're, they're, but who, I mean, who checks those pins to make sure that they have been put in?
Well, I check on the plan.
I know, but just because I, I've seen plans with it says that there's a pin there, there's never a pin there. I'm just curious, does anybody ever go out and check?
I don't on a regular basis, I do if it's somebody that I'm not familiar with. I mean, they, what I watch for is that the iron pins are proposed on the, on the site plan, and then on as-bills, they should be shown as set. I mean, ready to, to keep.
Right.
Is there a particular property or anything? I know it's an issue, I, um, I used to catch an individual didn't, you know, they just weren't going in. And I didn't realize it at first.
Jim, I don't recall that in, uh, Liteska's Acres back there, we had the pins on the the drawing that we approved. And, and I know we talked about the fact that, uh, they would show up on the as-built. But I know that's one of the things that I need to make, uh, sure I do a better job of, is that we get all the monumentation put on the site plans when we approve them there.
Yeah, well, now that you mention it, I mean, the as-built would not necessarily show up on a plot like that, it would show all the corners. Um, I can get a certification from the the engineer.
Well, I reviewed, uh, you know, in the subdivision regulations today, uh, you know, as I was looking, trying to find that, um, there's some fairly extensive marking of the boundaries with pins and monuments uh, required every so many feet, uh, you know, on long lines and all that kind of stuff, but, uh, so anyhow, I'll be, I'll be looking for that on the as-built drawing when we finally get one.
Yep, but still, Jed, it's the same thing, that it, it can say um, proposed or but it should say, uh, iron pin placed. And somebody needs to go out and check it because I know that there's pins that have been on prints previously, and the Los Teque one I know is not pinned.
Okay, I, I will take a look at that. And I still have at least building permit to issue, I believe one, one's been issued.
You're saying, I, I see there's no, there's no, uh, set schedule for that to happen. Um, maybe as part of the, maybe as part of, um, when the application comes in and the surveyor is out there. Um, I, I don't know if there needs to be a site lock and, uh, the pin placement, so we know that it's done. What do you think about that, Jed?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to find where it talks about that in, in the regs, when I looked this afternoon, what I read was the pins are required to be in before a building permit gets issued.
Okay, so.
So that would tell me that, uh, the building official, well, somebody needs to go out there before a building permit to build a, a house is issued, we gotta go out and check the, that the pins are in.
Right, so, so at least that's in there. We know when, when it's supposed to be done.
Yeah, I, I think probably the, the best road forward would be to include a, a standalone condition of approval on subdivisions that put the onus on the applicant, specifically the applicant's engineer or surveyor to place them before a building permit is issued, and, and they can be verified at that time. But at least they're shown on a plan with a certification that they're there.
Yeah, maybe, maybe on the permit, somebody's gonna have, there's a checkbox or something that, uh, the pins have been um, validated or something. As I know of other things too, because I looked at, you know, something else weekend, and I found that, no, it was a subdivision, but we had just done the last four or five years, I think, and there is no pin in that either.
Yep.
So, there's just not getting done.
Yep, and, and so our regulation states iron pins shall be installed at all lot corners, the commission shall require installation of such monuments in iron pins as a condition of approval of the subdivision or re-subdivision. A building permit shall not be issued until required monumentation and quarter pins are in place. So, I don't know. So I don't know how you get a building permit. But part of getting a building permit should be to go out and check that the monuments are in the pins are in place. And whether that's Jim or that's the building official, I don't know.
Yeah, I would rely on the building official. That that I mean, they just don't do that. There are things the building official won't do. That's one of them.
Okay, well, we ought to well. We ought to be holding the right person accountable to do the job that he needs.
Yeah, and I guess that would be me. It's it's very difficult, to be honest, to 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 put to amend our permit software. It's extremely tricky to to throw different requirements in there.
I don't know that it's tricky, Jim.
Well, figure it out.
When, you know, I I have talked to Eric about changing that software because there were a couple of things that I was unhappy with on the tracking. And Eric said, spend some of that money you got. Go out there and and have somebody work on that project. If we need to budget for it next year, you know, I was specifically talking about problems with the wetlands not having any of the the, you know, regulation requirements in the application anymore. But that that applies to us as well. If that's, you you know, if that's not a tool that is helping us to get the stuff done that needs to be done, that's wrong because the paper copy that we used to use had all those checks on it. And then we went to the supercomputer version. And all it does is have the guy's name and address on it. You know, it it is essentially worthless as far as I'm concerned.
Wow.
So we'll we'll take a look at that. But but the process I I'm I'm not keen on it. And I've been working first on my own processes to make sure that planning zoning commission does what we're supposed to do before I go out and tackle all these other things. But but there are are still some holes out there. And and that's one of them. But we'll go, Jim will go out, take a look at it, Scott.
Thank you, Jed and Jim.
Any other miscellaneous topics?
I have one thing, and I'll be quick. I just would like to add. I don't know if we have something in it already, but do we have anything that requires new construction or contractors to properly dispose of waste material from a site?
They're required to have a dumpster on site during construction. That is a standalone. It it's an ordinance within the town. Code of code of ordinances. Properly dispose of. Not that I'm aware of, no. I mean, if there's if there's stray material left on site.
Yeah, I mean, just I I I don't know about uh, the majority of the projects going in town, but just speaking from personal experience, and I know it's done it over now at this point, but when they did ten Webster, you know, there's there's still trash that's blowing around in the woods that they because they had all of they had a dump trailer and that was about it. And they were also burning a lot of their garbage on site. Uh, so I just feel that that's something. Yeah, I did go out. Townwide, townwide that we should really be. I mean, you you know, someone coming in and doing any sort of new construction in the town, they they should at least be, you know, responsible for disposing their own material properly.
I agree with you.
Agree with that, Kevin.
Yeah, I did go over.
Just just my, just my two, just my two cents. I just want to put that in there.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Kevin, because, yeah, that's the that's one of the the things we struggle with about having a building official who is not in our building, if you will. You know, he he works from Coventry Bolt, whatever, whatever town he's normally in and I think we're missing a linkage between him and Jim.
You know, I I don't necessarily have the authority to, but I can there there's no reason I can't ask them to do it before I can pretend like I have the authority. Before it should.
It it just, it just seems like right, you know, and right now they they just don't really have any consequence because, you know, I know, I know for ten Webster, you went over and, you know, requested that that, you know, told them, I think at one point that they need to stop burning material. And then you know, you leave and then the next day, what do they do? They just go and, you know, start start burning material again. So
No, we do have a burning official, but but that individuals does not does not monitor burn. They issue permits and that's it. It's it's a voluntary position to it. But I was kind of surprised when that when I found that out. And that was I only found that out as a result of ten Webster during the course of I wanted, somebody complained and I wanted to maybe it was you. And I thought I could defer to the the burning official and then I found out I couldn't.
Yeah, and I would imagine the burning official wouldn't issue permits for burning vinyl siding.
No, we not.
Sounds like a bird pit.
You got it. Anyways, I don't want to hold it up. I just want to bring it up.
Appreciate that.
No, I appreciate your input. Hey, because I can just.
Need to be aware of those those problems. No. Any other miscellaneous topics? Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn eight fifty six. Okay, I think we got Steve in there or was that Scott? Scott, your box lit up. Must have been you seconding that. So Scott Person seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstain? Hearing none. Motion passes five zero zero. Uh, thank you very much. I didn't expect this meeting to go quite that long tonight. But there were some good things that we needed to hash through and I appreciate the support of all you guys, especially when it comes to doing the training and all that. Uh, we ask a lot of a bunch of volunteers. Appreciate it. So thank you very much. Everybody have a great evening. Steve, have a great trip down south.
Thanks, Jed.
Go pack.
Okay, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Jed, good night.